And I'm here to let you know that as a property owner and a business owner downtown, I'm concerned that these lammards will decrease the economic vitality of the downtown. And I want to try my best to ensure that we have high density in our urban core. If you look around to other admirable cities, you'll see that that is the case, and I believe that that can work well here in this community. I ask that you consider not imposing the lammards in Waccah County and feel that there is enough land within the city limits to absorb growth for the foreseeable future. And all for high density.
There's some good things in here. I think we're getting close, but we're not there yet, and I want to kind of offer some ideas where hopefully we can keep making some improvements on the proposal. And again, you know, we only have 48 hours to sort of go over this, but a couple important points I see jumping out so far is the residential overlays. I can't quite understand what they are. It's potentially like a fig leaf of zoning that preserves overly dense zoning that's there right now. Particularly concerned about that use in Lake Waccah on the South Bay map, the Fort Bellingham map. Eliminating these overlays seems like a more appropriate way to make this plan fly with the hearings board. Also, there's a few overt up zones in here of existing rural areas. In particular, the Chukonut map includes an upzone of an undeveloped rural area that lacks urban services, and as the city has mentioned, they don't plan to provide urban services to. The existing R2 and R3 zonings are probably inappropriate as they are. Upzoning that to R1 is going to be problematic. R2 zoning has been found inappropriate for Lummi Island. I don't see how it's going to be found appropriate there. There's a part of the Glacier map that shows rural forestry being upzoned to R5. That's a small issue perhaps, but the Planning Commission recommendation of R10 seems more appropriate, given that our goal is to reduce sprawl. We don't reduce sprawl by upzoning rural land. Another problem, inappropriate high density in agricultural areas. Some elements in the proposal still leave R2 in agriculture areas, and I want to stress, I'm not saying there's a bright line that says everything's got to be, that we can't have R2 or that we can't have R1, but I imagine that the hearings board will find that sometimes R2 is appropriate and sometimes R2 is not appropriate. When it's surrounded by agricultural land on all three sides, like the Wisser Lake East map, the East Linden map, that's probably going to be problematic, and it might be very difficult for the county to defend. Again, R10 was proposed by the Planning Commission. It's probably more appropriate, given that the law says our goal is to protect resource-based industries. Other comments that, I hope you can leave the comment period open. I like that opportunity because I haven't been able to really write these up, but there's other examples of potentially inappropriate high density in rural areas, the North Bellingham map. But the residential overlays, I guess, are a big wild card and a big mystery, and they potentially can be a big problem. Thanks.
Not much time to digest this, and I'm sure you guys have been hurting your heads over it, and that's what I described when I read the one section about rural overlay. Just hurt my head. And I think I finally got an explanation out front, and I think that's one of the problems you have right now, is that you're really rushing this without the opportunity. There's no staff report, there's no findings of fact, and those are usually the shortcuts that help make the public, as well as yourselves, understand what you're doing, and so I'm not sure what some of the goals are. Some specific comments, just real quickly, and I'll try to get something in writing later. Lake Waccah, I think, let's make this simple, one home per five acres. And I know sometimes people say, well, you create unconforming lots. Take the lead on this issue. And I was interested, the City of Bellingham made a comment about that. The city needs to take a lead on it too, and not allow subdividing of land in the Lake Waccah watershed as well. And so you guys can, this is an opportunity to solve that problem around the periphery of the lake. Make it simple. The other area was out on the north, it's the Birch Bay I-5 area, northeast of the freeway. I look at aerial photographs from the 1990s, that looks like it's rural to me, and so I'm curious why it would be zoned rural general commercial. An odd one, New Halum. I don't know if anyone cares about New Halum, but I've been there, it's rural except for one grocery store and then some homes, so I'm not sure why you would want to designate that as rural general commercial, but that's off most people's radar screen. The two new zones, the rural general commercial and then the rural industrial manufacturing, I believe, RIM, shouldn't have come with REM maybe, but in the rural general commercial, man, it really opens it up, just about anything. Now, I grew up in a really rural area, much rural than what is in Waccah County, and we used to drive into town to go to movies and to go bowling.
30 seconds, please.
Now, I live inside the heart of the city, and under this code, I could drive out to the county to go bowling and watch movies. So look at that code carefully. In the RIM, there's a, at the beginning, it says, "A preference for ag and forestry", but there's nothing to ensure that ag and forestry activities are protected. And so I would suggest that everything from 20.69.054 be stricken, because from there on, it's talking about manufacturing, furniture, textiles, and having contractor sites.
I'd also like to draw to the attention of the council, the public record, including letters from over 50 local Chukonut area residents in support of a less dense zoning. I would urge also, as many previous speakers have done, that you keep the public record open substantially to allow input from concerned citizens and landowners. Turning specifically to Chukonut, I think, and I certainly do not claim expertise in land use planning, but I think on the face of it, the Chukonut area does not fulfill the lammard criteria as outlined. Among other considerations, it would not be consistent with the character of existing natural neighborhoods, either now or those that existed in 1990. It would create a lammard immediately adjacent to and abutting the boundary of the urban growth area of Bellingham. The existence of Chukonut Drive, Highway 11, and the current house density along that should not be used as the basis on which to justify a lammard in the entire area. The proposed lammard in this area would inevitably contribute to sprawl, and contrary to the Growth Management Act, that existing and reasonably feasible infrastructure would not support the proposed higher density in the Chukonut area. As speakers previously have noted, the inadequate roads, septic supply, septic service, water supply are all significant issues that could not reasonably be addressed. We should also, as an earlier speaker noted, consider the impact and the isolation of significant areas of the Chukonut area caused by the increasing number of freight trains foreseen along that corridor.
30 seconds, please.
The lammard provisions are intended to acknowledge and to accommodate pre-existing development and not to be used as a prospective and ongoing rural development tool. So in conclusion, the proposed designation of the Chukonut area as a lammard would irreversibly degrade the quality of the environment and quality of life in the area, and thereby reducing the property values of individual landowners. So thank you for your attention.
We hear a lot these days about the need for governments to act in a more business-like manner, and every successful businessman or woman takes their customers' needs seriously. They listen and they respond. And tonight, what I'd like to do is ask you to behave like a good, successful business owner would, which I do not think is the current state of affairs. Specifically, I'd like to make two requests. These requests both relate to the financial analysis of the impact of lammards and knowledge about your customers' real needs and your ability to communicate that to all county residents. First, I'd like to request that before the next hearing, with sufficient time for the public to review it, a financial assessment of the cost of all the infrastructure changes that were going to be required to support the development associated with the upzoning loss of, and without loss of service levels to current residents, broken down by each lammard you intend to impose on the citizens who live there. They're your prime customers within each lammard, not just a few people who may have their property upzoned. And I would really like to see your plan include how you're going to obtain, you plan to obtain revenues to build and maintain that infrastructure, including the percentage of costs you think should be paid by property owners within each lammard, and what percentage should be paid by other county residents. If you were acting as a real business, you'd want to know what your customers really thought about what you were doing. And so I think you have an obligation to provide all of the public, but particularly those who would be impacted by the lammards, with objective data showing what percentage of residents right now who live within the boundary of the lammards that you're proposing right now agree with, don't care about, or disagree with the proposed changes that you have in mind to impose upon them. I think that all county residents, as your customers, have the need and right to see the objective evidence that at least the majority of people who will be impacted by the zoning changes you intend actually agree to those changes. I hope you'll embrace this opportunity to behave more like businesspeople.
30 seconds, please.
And to take this good business path and not take the path of what might look like to some people, rather elitist disdain for your customers, where one more government body decides to do whatever you want to the public regardless of what we think, and maybe not even was seriously asking us what we think.
And we're hearing a lot of talk tonight about the county's not in compliance, and you've taken us down the primrose path to all kinds of horrible things. I can't buy that, excuse me. It's just exaggeration, and I'm really tired of it. If you look at these laws, you will find, and if you look at your plan as it is, it's not perfect, it has some problems in it, both directions, but for someone to say that the proposal is not in compliance without reading this carefully is just strictly a matter of opinion, and that's all it is. So I'm one of the few people who has lived in rural areas, is speaking here tonight, and most of the people I worked for in my business life are rural people that have owned their land for a long time, and they don't want to be preserved. Somebody used that phrase tonight, "Let's preserve our rural areas." Well, who's going to live there and be preserved? I'm going to focus on compliance. I think that's the hot issue. The present draft by the council is compliant in that it does achieve a far superior balance among the 13 Growth Management Act goals, and I did hand that out too. If you look at all of them, your plan is much more imbalanced than the one that came out of the Planning Department and out of the Planning Commission and hit the public in 2009. Those radical down zones in that plan were going too far, and the previous speaker talked about the economic impact. Well, there was no analysis of the economic impact of that proposal on school districts, other taxing districts, or landowners. It's a two-edged sword. I'll move on to the definition of rural character. Please notice in there, it talks about rural-based economies, opportunities to live and work in rural areas. And I think the emphasis there is that the county is the one, whether it's Waccah or Skagit, it's up to we here in Waccah County to define our rural characters, not the Growth Management Hearings Board or the legislature. They're giving us guidelines, and they're in front of you now, and if you look at the findings on rural lands, you will find quite a few phrases underlined about the economic side of things, not just the environmental side of things. So we are looking for a balance between the public interest and private civil rights. Thank you.
I'm here tonight representing my clients, the Isaacson family and their property, and we submitted a letter tonight that we hope that you will get an opportunity to read. There is some new information in this letter that we think is very timely and relevant. My clients want to thank you for the hard work that you've put in, and they want to thank for listening to them and to thank you for the work that you've done, not only for them, but for the people of Waccah County and the rural areas. They've owned their property a long time, as have many other people, and it's always been their intent to do something with it that would greatly benefit the community, both locally and globally, and we've talked about that in our letter. Lastly, we talk in this letter in detail about the property itself, and we hope that you, once again, will take an opportunity to read it because there is new information, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact us. And we also want to remind you really quickly that if they are downzoned, this family will be facing the largest downzone in Waccah County throughout this entire process of single property owners.
I am the biggest hit, I guess, that's going to happen here. We've submitted several letters by my attorney. I've submitted two very comprehensive packages to you. I think you've, this council has given more than ample opportunity for input. I challenged any of the other people earlier that say that you haven't. I've been to every work session except for one. I've spoke to six of you with the exception of Councilmember Wymer, and I have not seen him present, but all six of you I've spoke to. You've all given me opportunities and returned my calls, and I thank you very much in regards to this. Whether you agree or disagree with me, I thank you all for listening very much. My feeling is, is that unless you're a starving child, or you're at Children's Hospital, or you're from a battered women's shelter, or you're hungry, I don't want to give you anything. Real simple. I'm tired of people wanting to take from me through legislative actions. The GMA wouldn't have even passed if it wasn't for the City of Seattle and King County members. They're not from Waccah County. Waccah County wouldn't have, this wouldn't even be here today if Waccah County voted on it. You have a special interest group here, yes, that I consider NIMBYs. I don't see any one of them being personally affected. I do know that this is going to affect employment. I do know that I'm not a taker. I do know that several special interest groups here, including one major one in this county, has spent an awful lot of money fighting this GMA issue, and it takes public resources at a time that we can't afford it. I don't want to do that. But many speakers that you heard tonight are the ones that are taking the public resources and are doing and completing the lawsuits, and have several of the outcomes that you've heard on these court cases. I don't want to do that. And as your customers, a prior lady said, I'm one of your customers, if you're a business, and I'd appreciate if you would think a little bit about our side as a property owner. I want to protect the environment.
30 seconds, please.
I want to do those things as well, and I've tried diligently to do that for many, many years. And I don't think by just having a no development agenda accomplishes that. So again, I close with unless you're Children's Hospital, or you're battered women's shelter, or you can't afford food, I don't want to give you anything.
I represent TC Trans, and I'm urging you tonight to keep your recommendation in place to allow 30,000 square foot buildings, especially in type 3 lammards. The purpose of type 3 lammards is to allow for existing businesses to continue and also to expand. There's no restrictions in the Growth Management Act with regard to type 3 lammards as to building sizes, that they somehow be the same as in 1990. There's information in the record that buildings larger than 30,000 square feet already exist in the rural area. And the type 3 lammard at Birch Bay Linden I-5 is particularly suited for larger buildings. There are larger buildings there already. The area is bounded by the freeway and railroad tracks and cannot expand. And this is really the only place that a business like TC Trans, which is trucking and freight hauling business, can locate in Waccah County. An overly restrictive size limit will not allow this business to continue to provide employment opportunities in the rural area. This is not an upzone, at least for my client. It is a downzone. Currently, there is no building size limit in this area, so you do need to keep that in mind. 30,000 square feet is a good compromise in this situation, so I'm urging you to allow building size flexibility that reflects existing rural character and reflects the business needs of your rural businesses.
But I must say, Governor's Point and the Chukonut Lammard is a court case on the docket for GMA. It explains how bad it has gotten in this, not even looking at the law, the GMA law, what's happened to Holmes Harbor, South Whidbey. To see those on the docket is a bad joke to someone who's studied this as I have. Lake Waccah, Lake Waccah is one of those areas that's a separate watershed that we have a defined purpose for before 1990 was zoned, before 1990. It was closed until 2003, and you know how hard you worked on rezoning, redoing ordinances on that area. I will support a type 1 lammard for the designated area of Southern Valley totally. I reject the overlay area. It's not clearly defined. There's not bad ideas with it, and it's rural zoning there, so it's not going to get too tight, but there are things going on in Southern Valley, the other side of Lake Louise, in Southern Valley, takeovers, insider trading, lack of disclosure, trying to take over our processes that will come out, and it must out, as the great Indonesian said, it must out, but this has to come out. As far as the general terms here, I commend the staff for all the work they've done. I know how Birch Bay has worked, but it's a general plan, and without seeing it, you know, not going into my old friends at New Halum, but I can't really comment it except for Lake Waccah.
30 seconds, please.
Lammard, Southern Valley, limited to below 1990. The packet includes the TMDL, it has teeth. Are we doing enough funding, Lake Waccah? Good thing. The county is not, Southern Valley is not. Okay? And a little thing from Southern Valley that'll explain to you how they tried to take back the Density Reduction Fund.
Time.
And some other things going on in Southern Valley. I'm going to give it to a fair witness on the council, and he can deal with it as he wants.
I just sort of want to take a step back and see if we can add a broader perspective, maybe 100-year perspective, which goes in the blink of an eye by some accounts. It seems like if we look back 100 years from now, employment's going to be going up and going down, and people are going to make money and lose money, and things are going to happen. I've been in this town probably eight years now, and I live down on the south side, and when you drive down Chukonut, I'm talking about Governor's Point, only that area, when you drive down Chukonut, it's one of the only areas you can look out and see really a pristine look that looked like hundreds and hundreds of years ago. I can only imagine what it would be like to do that in a few years and look and see Edgemore out there in Governor's Point. Clark's Point fortunately had the foresight to look for the long term and protect that jewel of ours, which is Chukonut Bay, and it seems like the only mistake we can make is to allow it to be developed. If we're wrong and it should have been developed in 10 years, okay, let's look at it again, or 20 years, but once we say yes, once you folks say yes to it, that's it, and it's gone forever. And when anyone comes here 50 years, 100 years from now, to be able to remember what America was like, and you know, someone mentioned Teddy Roosevelt earlier, this is like a Teddy Roosevelt moment for this spot, for you folks. You have a choice to preserve it and hopefully take a step back and make an exemption here and say, "This is different than the other areas." I mean, I can't speak with great information about Lake Waccah or the guide, but I know that there is something so unique and special about that Chukonut Bay and the way it's staying right now, if you do what we've empowered you hopefully to do, is to really look out for it and us. And when we talk about economics, and I can only imagine to have that as our postcard still, like we often do, and say, "This is the kind of county we are," and we do need to grow, and I understand that, and there are many intricacies as to how we accomplish it, but to slash and go against what is truly the character of it now and make it into another community that looks like everything else seems like an unbelievable crime and a shame. And I hope all of you can look in your hearts and think about what's the long term for us as just humans, Americans, whatever we want to call ourselves, that it's a real big deal and that the stroke of the pen changes it forever.
30 seconds, please.
Either positively or negatively. And I hope that you'll be able to find a way to say, "Okay, you know what, that guy touched something in me, and it did make a difference, that area. Let's take that out, and let's go back 10 acres or five acres, but no less than that." Thank you, and for all future generations.
I was going to talk about Teddy Roosevelt also, as a visionary, over 100 years ago, 1890s to the early 1900s, he, because of him and Gifford Pinchot, and I'm sure some others, but especially Roosevelt as president, preserved millions of acres of forest land that we still have. And if you look on maps, you'll see places that have been preserved because of Teddy Roosevelt's work. My parents bought Clark's Point in the mid-1950s, and my dad used to be a logger as a young man, and he loved his bulldozer up until his 80s and chainsawing, and as they got older, they started wondering what to do, what do they want to see happen to the point, because they owned it. They had a choice in that, and decided that they wanted to preserve the point for future, along with myself and my siblings. So they became little Teddy Roosevelts in regards to the visionary for a little piece of property. And I guess what I'm hoping you can do, or we all can do, but especially looking at being good stewards to Waccah County, trying to protect the rural character. Roger said something about who's living, who's going to live there and be preserved. I was thinking, well, I live in one, I live on Clark's Point, and I'm being preserved, and the land's being preserved. I feel honored to be able to be a steward to the land. I encourage you two, as someone else, to take the lead, focus on infilling more. It should be, as Betsy said, should be harder to develop than to preserve.
I think the county is stampeding into the lammards under the time pressure that it feels, and they are too irreversible to be done without very good consideration and without very good reason, particularly in the Chukonut area, where there are very, very severe infrastructure problems, which I think you failed to adequately consider. It doesn't meet the criteria of a lammard, and it's a serious irreversible change.
I'm a newcomer here. I've only lived here for a decade, but my family has lived in rural Washington for over seven generations. I grew up in a rural setting. I grew up doing 4H, participating in 4H farming, agriculture, raising animals, those sorts of activities. We must have known the wrong people because I've never seen a one-acre farm in my life. I also, and later in life, spent years in the public sector, and I spent years in the public sector doing public service, delivery of services such as sewage, wastewater treatment, roads, transportation, and et cetera. And I am here to tell you what you already know, and everyone else here that is clamoring for more development, is that all of those services don't come free. Infrastructure is extremely expensive, and maintenance is even more expensive and lasts forever. Infrastructure costs may be able to be assimilated in one or two years. The maintenance that is associated with those goes on forever, and I don't think that any of the people who are anxious to keep their taxes low, myself included, are going to be thrilled about having their taxes raised to pay for all of the infrastructure that we're talking about here. So all these things are very expensive, and I hope that we're taking that into consideration as we look at our planning, because it's important that we look at not just short-term costs, but long-term costs as well. I also moved away from Seattle for very specific reasons, probably like a lot of people here, and I moved away from Aurora Avenue in Seattle because it was a horrible place to live. And I'm very, very sad to see the Guide Meridian turning into Aurora. Now, don't get me wrong, lammards have their place. I think there's a, it's a wonderful structure to allow for some specific areas of development, but if we end up with unending lammards, what we have is strip development, and we have Aurora Avenue, and as much as everyone argues about what rural character is, I would hope we could all agree that Aurora Avenue is not necessarily rural.
With the lot coverage and the setbacks and the building size, it brought a lot more balance to this and the RGC zoning, and I just appreciate all you guys' work on that.
I appreciate all the work you've done.
I appreciate all the work you've done, and I commend you on bringing some balance to the plan. I also agree there are some sensitive areas that need to be protected, but when, I think it's wonderful that somebody moves here in two, in 2003 and then would like all the North County to stay rural, that's great. She should really buy up 50 acres and keep it rural. I'm insulted when people come up with a, a city address and then they say, "We just have to keep the county rural." Well, it's insulting because I've owned my property for 50 years, and I want it to stay nice, too. I would have stayed there for 50 years without developing. All of the property owners out there are not developers. We're not all running around to put one house per acre or whatever, and I think it's insulting when, when it seems, if you listen, there's a few differences, but the city addresses are just all for retaining the rural look of the county. I want to retain it, too. But on another hand, Meridian School District, just keep that all rural. Where do we get the money for that school district? I don't see Bellingham coming out there and picking up kids. I don't see Bellingham contributing to the money for that. We have to have some Lammerts, some areas of business, to have a tax base for that school district. That's crazy. We willingly, we pay the highest taxes, as I understand it, in that area, for the Meridian School District, and people that live there on purpose will continue to do that. But for somebody else to say, another man said, "Oh, I am a businessman in Bellingham, and I want infill and to keep businesses in here." Gosh, that's great. We need something out in the county. We need some areas to get a tax base for Meridian School District. And those are, so I, I do commend you on trying to balance this out, and I know it's a difficult job, and I do have property in the county, and I do want to preserve the rural look of it.
Thirty seconds, please.
We do have to have some balance.
I came here tonight as an observer. I don't have a personal interest in the changes to the GMA. I mean, I don't own any property that will be directly affected, but neither do most of these would-be regulators from Bellingham. For years, most of us were under the impression that the GMA was aimed at environmental protection. At least, that's what we were hearing. But it was obvious from the original GMA plan that was created by the Futurewise Council that it had little to do with protecting the environment and everything to do with choking off the rural economy. That is not how you create a sustainable community. I want to thank the council members for all the hard work and the time that you have put into this planning. I came here to support you and my rural neighbors in trying to come up with the very best, the very best plan that will allow our rural community to prosper, because it is only by working together and supporting each other that we, we create a truly sustainable community. Thank you.
I didn't, too, didn't expect to speak, but I'm tired. I'm tired of the lawyers and the special interests who represent groups with fancy flowery names that don't necessarily reflect their true motives. I'm tired of the unending list of regulations that continue to tighten the noose and close off our personal property rights. I'm tired of the people who move here and try to change us into some Orwellian utopia that they believe must be done. I've lived here almost all of my life. I think the majority of the people are tired of this. I think these people that couldn't solve their problems where they came from and came here and are trying to make my problems their problems, I would just soon, and they're very welcome to go back where they came from. I encourage the council to continue what they're doing, and do not, whatever you do, do not lengthen the duration of this any longer than it has to be, because these same efforts will continue week after week after week to find something to crave or change in the deal that will continue to draw this out till the end of time. Thank you.
I live in a Lammert. I live in a very densely populated area in the county. It's a very appropriate place. Neptune Beach was platted 80 or 90 years ago. Sandy Point has been platted for years. It's appropriate for people to live out there. And I'm really tired of hearing from people who live in the city and want to drive out to the county and see some sort of absolutely pristine place untouched by people. Now, maybe in the future, we could develop some Potemkin villages or something. We could dress up on Saturdays and wave at them as they drive by and see, and see their pristine countryside. We all have to live. When we moved out to Neptune Beach 60 years ago, there was a gas station almost literally on every corner. At Pleasant Valley, there was a store. At Mountain View, there was a store. If you went up to Linden, there was a store on practically every crossroads, Delta, Northwood. Having services in the rural areas is an ecologically positive thing. People don't have to drive to buy their groceries. They don't have to drive to buy their gasoline. It gives some people place to work near where they live. We need to encourage rural development to serve the rural community. I think you're getting a lot closer with the proposal now, and I appreciate it. And I think we all need to read our U.S. constitutions, our Washington State constitutions, and our county charter, along with all of the, all of the RCWs that everybody's reading.
And I have written you before, approximately six months ago, about my concerns over Chukonut Drive and the plans. We have no commercial developments on Chukonut Drive, and we do just fine without it. I've lived there 20 years, have seen a lot of growth there. Chukonut Drive does not handle traffic well. And my main concern, obviously, is Governor's Point. I've heard people today to this evening speak about that we do not need scenic views, we do not need to preserve beautiful properties. We do. Look at Clark's Point. It's a treasure. And the plans for Governor's Point include a marina with many boats, desalination plants, septic tanks, and lots of houses on one very small exit, exit road. Chukonut does not deserve a Lammert. It's not appropriate. I will go home and write you another letter. But thank you for listening. Save Chukonut.
Thank you.